On the agenda is one, warrants, two minutes of eleven nineteen twenty, three, the Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance Agreement, four, town office project update, five, public comments via Zoom. Remember, everybody, if we're going to have a lot of people, we have to keep it to three minutes for talking. Thank you. So let's start with the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Jamie, second.
Can I have a second?
Jamie.
Oh, Jamie, okay. All in favor, Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, warrants. Payroll ending eleven twenty-two for seven thousand five hundred and forty dollars and fifty-four cents. Payroll ending eleven twenty-nine for ten thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty cents. Accounts payable ending eleven twenty-seven twenty for thirty-six thousand three hundred and one dollars and nine cents. Seven thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars for the Bennington County Sheriff's Patrol. Two thousand nine sixty for the wastewater treatment facility chemicals. Green Mountain Power for one thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. Puget Water Quality District for eighteen hundred dollars. MVP Health Insurance for seven thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty cents. FEMA Retirement, three thousand two seventy-four oh five. That total again was thirty-six thousand three hundred and one dollars and nine cents. Accounts payable ending twelve four twenty for one million seven hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and seven cents. Three thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars is for technology, which is part of the ledger grant expense. And then the elementary school taxes were paid and had to be voided and re-submitted, revised under the new name because it's no longer Pine Elementary. It's under the Southwest Vermont Union District, and that was for one million seven hundred and two thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. And that total again was for one million seven hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and seven cents. So can I entertain a motion, please?
Angie, can we separate out payroll on the warrants for the that ended the twenty-ninth? And do the other? My, my, I'm on payroll for the period ending the twenty-ninth.
Oh, are you in that one, Mike?
I think that's the one probably, isn't it, Linda?
Or the twelfth? Yeah, that's it, Mike.
That's what I thought. So could we separate and then approve in three and then do the last one, please?
Okay, sure. So can I have a motion to accept? Which one is he not in?
Uh, payroll eleven twenty-two.
Alright, so can I have a motion for payroll ending eleven twenty-two for seven thousand five hundred and forty dollars and fifty-four cents?
Don't move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie? Jamie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Payroll ending eleven twenty-nine for ten thousand five eighty-five forty. Can I entertain a motion?
Don't move.
Jamie, second?
Yep.
Okay, um, Mike?
Mr.?
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Alright, then can I have a motion for the last two accounts payable?
Make a motion for the accounts payable, both of them.
Can I have a second?
Jamie?
Yep.
Okay, Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mike. Alright, so next is the Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance Agreement, excuse me?
We'll do the minutes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Minutes of eleven nineteen twenty.
Make a motion.
Any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Three, I'm sorry, jumped ahead of myself. Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance Agreement, we need to sign this. Could everybody read it in their email?
Yes.
Yep.
Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to sign the Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance Agreement.
Can I have a second? Any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you, everybody. Now we're going to turn it over to Rebecca for the town office project update.
Okay, I'm gonna turn off Tom Shuey's camera. I got it, Tom. And I'm gonna pass sharing over. Hold on. Because we have a prepared presentation. And I'm trusting no one else will try and share something. Go ahead, Bob.
Welcome to the Town of Pownell's Town Hall Project Presentation. I'm Rebecca Dragon, Liaison to the Pownell Select Board. I want to say upfront that if any one of you has any questions at all, to please reach out to me at four dot liaison at townofpownell dot org or info at townofpownell dot org. And I will always try to answer completely and transparently. This presentation was created to give an overview of the history of our present town hall project, to give an in-depth update of progress made to date, and talk about the next steps needed to bring this project to completion. Although this has been spoken about in depth, I want to quickly speak about why Pownell needs a new town hall. Our current town hall is one open space with two offices separated by an open corridor. The full usable space is approximately one thousand square feet and provides office space for three listers, a town clerk and assistants, our executive assistant, our treasurer, and at least four other part-time officials. It is also the primary meeting space for our boards and commissions. The space was already incredibly cramped before March 2020, but now, in a pandemic with necessary safety precautions, it's become unusable full-time for anyone. Especially during this past year, the limitations of the town hall have been a huge impediment to town functionality and the ability of our officials and employees to perform their jobs. Additionally, the small building is infested with mold and has already required extensive mold remediation and air filtration. Continued use of this building would require further mold remediation at extensive expense to the town. The conversation about a new town hall is certainly not a new one. For about twenty years, many concerned citizens and officials have put their heads down to try and come up with viable solutions. Many ideas have been part of the public discourse, and many of those ideas were brought to architecture firms for planning and presented to the town as a whole. Unfortunately, these projects never came to voter approval. However, in 2018, the Pownell Historical Society presented their idea for a new town hall. Before we were able to bring the project to the voters, first, the Select Board created an RFP and reviewed multiple bids. The Pownell Historical Society Plan, as presented by Mr. Pownell, was unanimously approved by the Select Board. In October of 2019, the project and subsequent required bond was approved by the voters by a two-to-one margin. This town hall will be a two-story building with three thousand six hundred and seventy-eight square feet on one floor, plus a lower level of one thousand and sixty-three square feet, set on Center Street, right next to our present town hall on the Town Green. It will be set on the site of the former Bartel's Lodge, which the town purchased for the specific purpose of a new town hall. Incorporated into its design will be an important historical asset, Pownell Schoolhouse Number Eight, which will be moved and preserved as a community meeting room. The upper floor of the building will house the town offices, and the lower level will be used as an office and research room for the Pownell Historical Society. The main building is a prefabricated structure by a company called Preferred Builders. Once the project was approved, the next step was to begin the permitting process. The process of obtaining all the necessary permits was a long one. We discovered that we needed to make adjustments to meet present code. After COVID, also created a backup in March to May due to changes in how people were working. Most state and local employees had to adjust to working at home or part-time. By summer, we still had not received building or site permits. At the end of summer, we received our site permit from the Development Review Board. In early fall, we received both the local and state wastewater permits. We also received the state stormwater permit. The last piece to fall into place was the state building permits as issued by Fire and Safety. To help us get over the finish line, we hired an architect, John Ray Hill, of Black River Design in Montpelier, to help us finalize our plans to ensure they met all relevant code and to give us an architectural stamp. Mr. Ray Hill had previously worked with Preferred Builders on the construction of the School Supervisory Union in Montpelier. After many conversations between the town, the architect, and Fire and Safety, and several minor adjustments to the plans, we finally received our construction permits dated December one, 2020. This is a significant milestone, as receiving this last needed permit makes this project shovel-ready. So why are we bringing this project back to the voters when it was already approved in 2019? As with any construction project, original estimates are likely to increase as time passes due to availability and standard cost of materials and cost of labor. Many manufacturers and contractors have had to increase their prices also due to lost business during the pandemic. There are also standard increases that come with time, supply, demand, and inflation. The original estimates for the project are over two years old, so last month, we began to research, validate, and update all of the estimates to get a current updated cost of the total project. On average, we have found an overall increase of approximately twelve percent to the whole project. This represents a moderate increase in some aspects of the project, but also important to mention here is that some of our service providers were able to hold their prices from two years ago in a desire to see the project to completion. Following is a breakdown of what was increased. The foundation estimate increased from approximately sixty thousand to one hundred thousand dollars. This was our largest increase. We believe this is not to be a true organic increase, but more reflective of an original flawed estimate. Preferred Builders, which is the builder of the prefabricated building, increased to a price of four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. This includes a three percent builder's refund that will be refunded upon delivery, which is approximately a thirteen thousand dollar refund. Messina Builders had a slight increase from fifty-eight thousand to sixty-four thousand, which represents a standard increase in their hourly rate, covering sixteen weeks of full-time construction. We anticipate an increase in the cost of excavation from ten to twenty percent. Electrical had an increase of ten percent. We're still waiting for the final estimate from the plumber, but he indicated the estimate looked good and fair, but we are adding ten percent increase until we have a final number. Fire and Safety did not accept Preferred Builders' standard third-party engineer stamps on the building plans. So the town hired an architect to evaluate and adjust the plans and affix his stamp. Because the town believed the original plans to be sufficient for permitting, Preferred Builders agreed to take on the cost of the architect, which will return to us as a reduction at final invoice. This means that we are likely to receive a reduction of approximately twenty thousand at final invoice from Preferred Building Systems. This makes their true end number approximately four hundred and six thousand instead of four hundred and twenty-six thousand. In order to get our local site permit from the Development Review Board, we engaged a professional engineer to stamp and create a detailed site plan. They also needed to adjust some foundation plans to reflect recent change in code so that we could get our state construction permits. Gravel may be able to be provided by the town, which will offer savings. A transfer station is willing to help with debris removal during the construction process, so we can also have significant savings on debris removal. Volunteers can legally be used with a BLCT volunteer agreement to do smaller jobs such as the removal of stairs and chimney at the old schoolhouse, traffic control during the moving of the schoolhouse, removal and replacement of the mailboxes along Center Street when we move the schoolhouse, and moving office furniture when we're ready to move in. Upon beginning the construction, the Pownell Historical Society is giving the town twenty-five thousand dollars towards the project. Our local wastewater permit was provided to the town at no cost. Additionally, because this is a brand-new building, it is being constructed to meet the highest energy efficiency standards. This will produce significant ongoing savings to the maintenance of the building. It will also reduce the risk of needing expensive repair or maintenance for years. What has Pownell invested in this project to date? Bartel's Lodge property was purchased for the purpose of the construction of the new town hall over fifteen years ago for sixty thousand dollars. We hosted a special election, which garnered approval for the project. Professional plans and drawings were created with all of the necessary stamps and approvals. All of our permitting is in place. At this point, what is left to spend on the project to bring it to completion is estimated to be eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. We have one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars already reserved for this project. Upon groundbreaking, we will receive twenty-five thousand dollars from the Pownell Historical Society. I would also ask that the board considers setting aside more money in the coming year's budget for the town office project, as it has done for two decades. With rebates at the end for Builders' three percent and the architectural fee, we will likely see another twenty thousand dollar reduction. This leaves a needed amount of six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. With an addition of forty-six thousand dollars for a contingency, this would bring our new bond amount to six hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which is a ninety thousand dollar increase from our original approved bond amount. According to present bond interest rates, this will increase the total annual tax collection by approximately five thousand dollars for each of the twenty years of repayment. To put this into perspective, this means that for each taxpayer, this averages to an increase of less than two dollars per taxpayer per year for twenty years. Our boards and commissions have worked on getting village designations for Pownell. A village designation brings the potential of added state resources to that area. The Pownell Town Green, which is located right next to our present town hall and includes a town park, was always intended to house a new town hall and be the center of potential economic growth, increased civic participation, and community development. Projects already in the works for the development of the Town Green are: Applications for the Historical Preservation Grant for our idyllic Center Street Church, which was featured on the cover of Life Magazine; Purchasing holiday lights for the Great Spruce Tree that was mentioned in the original deed; A Spark Grant for the purposes of putting an ice skating rink on the tennis court; And a Parks and Rec Committee, which will be looking for opportunities to fundraise for and develop family recreational activities at the town park. Also, the historic Schoolhouse Number Eight, moved to and preserved on the Town Green, will not only serve as a place for boards and commissions to meet, but will be available to our residents for use for community events such as classes, presentations, meetings, and art exhibitions. Unfortunately, if this project is not seen through to completion, we're going to be back at square one. Even if there are other ideas that sound viable, there would be great expense to the town just to determine if the project is truly viable and affordable. We have already come together and invested so much. We truly hope that we can finally accomplish the building of a new beautiful town hall that will make all of its residents proud and also continue to serve Pownell even after all of us here are gone. We have the opportunity to provide a legacy and the beginning of a vibrant and active town center that brings unity, connection, and community spirit to all who live and visit here. For this last piece, I'm going to channel Joyce Held, who is the treasurer of the Pownell Historical Society. She has been tirelessly championing this idea for over two years. So I'm going to do a Joyce and tell a story, and I'm going to ask you to use your imaginations. Imagine driving down Center Street on a cold winter day and seeing the Christmas lights shining on the banks of snow on the side of the road. Imagine the Center Street Church painted and repaired with its iconic bell tower restored. Looking ahead, you see a beautiful town hall building with an attached historic schoolhouse. As you head to park your car, you see families skating on the green, warming their hands over fires in the fire pits. Perhaps there are food vendors there. Imagine the door to the community space schoolhouse is open, and a local teacher or a parent is leading a craft project for local children, or perhaps families are gathered around to watch a presentation about local history. Imagine the walls and display cases covered in the works of local artists representing all of our local talent. This is about more than a town hall. This is about a vision that we can hold together for Pownell. A Pownell that not only honors its rich and important history, but one that looks forward to welcome more activity, opportunity, and enhancement. I want to say that although I've been personally working fairly diligently on this project for several months, this is in no way my work. This project would not exist as it is today without all of the past two decades of discussions, decisions, ideas, collaboration, and work of our neighbors. It is an honor to help see this to its end mark, and I truly hope that Pownell will offer its support and collaboration so that we can bring this vision to reality together. Welcome to the-
Hey.
Very good.
Any discussion from the board?
Want to say thank you for putting that together. People that were working on that presentation did a very good job. And just wanted to add that the town has spent other resources or other monies looking at other sites, and they've been deemed not viable. And just want to put that out there, that there was other sites in the beginning that were looked at. And since we own the property and are at this far into the stage and have all our permits in place, that I think we should just be focused on what we're working on presently.
I agree.
Three or four boards were in the past prior to us that did a lot of alternate looking, I guess is the fairest way that they can put it, for different sites. So.
Okay. We'd like to open up-
Questions? I have some questions, actually.
Okay, Mike?
How much money have we spent out of one seventy-five that we had in contingency? Where from?
Zero.
So that one seventy-five is still sitting there?
Yes.
So where, when we spent the money for engineering and all that kind of stuff, where did that come from?
That was the reserved money that we saved for moving expenses. We had used it to pay for costs on the front end of this project.
Okay. I just, I just want to make sure that the voters are clear. I mean, I'm clear on it. It's just questions that I know, you know, that weren't really presented in the, in the presentation. So I just, I just want to make sure that all the voters are clear on what has been spent and where it's come from at this point.
Okay. I've been very careful to make sure that the board has not dipped into the one seventy-five that's been reserved for this project.
Oh, I know that, Linda. I just, like I said, I just want to make sure that there's no questions, you know, before we get into public comment or try to get as many of them out there. One of the questions that I have, actually, was the gravel coming from the town? Where did that, when did that arise and whose idea or where did that come from?
I believe Pauline maybe had some conversations with Nelson Brownell early on in the stages. We actually did some of this during the wastewater project where we could use gravel and save some money.
You spoke to Joel, correct?
Yes. I spoke with Joel. If it's bank run, it's about eight loads of gravel, and it's doable.
That's, okay, because that's the first I heard of that. I mean, I, I don't know. I have a problem robbing Peter to pay Paul, but that's okay.
It's part of the foundation work.
Well, no, I understand, but I mean, like I said, I mean, we have a gravel bid that we have gravel for our roads, and that's, you know, the lease that we pay that on. And now we're going to rob Peter to pay Paul. Basically, at some point, we're going to have to come up with the gravel that we take out of the gravel bed for the town office project. Eventually, we're going to have to buy that gravel, so why not buy it now to end it down with it? That's my, I mean, that's just my line of thinking.
As long as we're not using the processed gravel that we've got for the roads.
Well, yeah, but the processed gravel, the processed gravel comes from bank-run gravel that you process. So in my mind, like I said, in my mind, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Well, this is Bob Jarvis, and my apologies, my camera is not working. But I just want to, I just want to, I think it's a valid question, and I think and it is true that if you're, that if you're taking it from one, from one's, from one source for the, for the use, there is some cost associated to it. I wouldn't go so far as to say robbing Peter to pay Paul, but it is a way to reduce the overall burden on the taxpayer in the short term. But a valid point is how many loads of gravel and how much is a load of gravel worth? We should probably calculate that out and be, and let the voters know. Just my thoughts.
Thank you, Bob. Mike, are you done?
Uh, for now.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that you didn't have any more questions.
There's a couple of things we'll split to you, you know.
Okay, we're going to open up the public comment. Remember, three minutes, please.
I've got the timer, Angie, so we're good with that.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
So I'm looking for hands to be raised.
Please raise your hand if you have a question.
Yep, hold on. Go ahead, Jenny. I see you. Go ahead and unmute yourself if you can. If not, I can do it. Let's see, I think I have to do it. There you go.
And please specify your name. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Jenny Dewer. In the town meetings in October 2019, we were told that we would break ground in November or December of 2019 before we voted for this. The implication was that everything was in place, and since we were, since we were told this in October, did the board at that time not understand that they needed permits?
We understood that we needed permits.
So why didn't we not break ground in November or December? We're being told now that the permitting process took such a long time that this is why we're a year later with no town office.
Right. We had to wait for certain things to be done to get the permits.
So did the board, previous board to you, Angie, you were not on the board at that time, but Bob and Jamie were. Did they not understand that it would take time to get the permits? Because we were promised breaking ground in November or December, and Brian made it very clear that if we went to January, it was going to raise costs. And we voted based on this information that we received at those town meetings.
Well, just to be clear, what was, what we said at the time was our goal was to break ground. It was to break ground before January to avoid the new, to avoid the new regulations that would take place in January.
Yeah, I know, Bob.
Literally, we didn't say-
I listened to it again today. I watched the meeting today, so I know exactly what was said. Yes, thank you, though. I listened to it again today. I watched the meeting today. So I know exactly what was said. Yes. Thank you though. I also want to know, do the new projections include the additional money spent over the past year? Or is this, or is this new projected cost in addition to those costs that we have spent this year, including the $9,000 to the engineering plans?
So, so we, we have spent, we have spent so far out of, out of the town hall fund, but not out of the 175,000, approximately $40,000 towards this project. So as you, as we talked about during the presentation, we added 46,000 to the new request. So that would replete all of the money.
So that adds another 45,000 to the request that you're asking for, since we've just, we've already spent 45,000 this year. So it's, so it's raised at over 100,000 at least. That answers my question then. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you. Next please, raise your hand.
Oh, Jamie wants to like to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then, and then Mike will be next.
Okay, I can't see.
Yeah, sorry. I have to.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Part of the issue was the original RFP for the project lacked some of the items that were needed for the whole project. It was based, the original RFP was more for a building site and the building itself. It didn't actually have all the specs needed. That was three boards ago. And so, once that all came to fruition and we realized that, that's when we had to take and put, go back to the drawing board as far as a site plan. And, and that stuff had to be done in place prior to going after these permits. And we did not know that at the time of that October meet. It wasn't until afterwards. So I just wanted to be fair about that.
Okay, Jamie, thank you. Mike, are you?
Yeah, let me, let me unmute him. I think I have to do it. Asked to unmute and there you go. Mike, if you can unmute yourself. There you go. Here he is.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
Yeah, thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Please state your name.
My name is Mike Slattery.
Hi.
Thank you, Angie.
You're welcome.
Okay. I, first of all, I want to say a couple of things that, first of all, kudos to Joyce Held and Pauline Guttlow. I, you know, I, I think they've gone above and beyond, given a lot of themselves, worked hard on this project. And I wish we were in a better place with the project for their sake as well as the people in Pownell. But I think this board and the last board has a problem. I, I think when voters walk into that booth faced with any increase in this, they're going to feel betrayed. They're going to feel like they were misled. And they're walking into that booth right after paying substantially higher taxes this year. And I think that's going to be a real problem. You know, if we're at 60,000 now, when we finally break ground, what are we going to be at? 100,000, 150? You know, these things aren't going to, aren't going to be stable. They're going to continue probably to increase. You know, unfortunately, in looking back at this thing over the past year and a half, it, it's a little bit like watching amateur hour. I know that this is hard stuff, but if you had the right people in place from the start, a lot of this could have been avoided. And, you know, it, it, it kind of started with the last board, you know, when we heard about getting permits. We heard about lack of site plans. We heard about, you know, the Fire Marshal's Office. We heard about the Agency of Natural Resources. None of this was, was done in a timely fashion. This thing's gone on for a long time. I'm not sure where it ends up. I don't believe anybody thought this project could have been done for $770,000. I don't think anybody believed that. I don't think the last board truly believed that. I think they voted for it so that we'd have something in place that the voters in Pownell would say, let's So, you know, I, I just, just a couple of observations, no questions. I, I wish it would all go through. I, I wish it were much smoother. And that's it. That's all I've got.
Well, I, thank you very much. I ensure you that this board is trying to move things forward. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
So.
Anybody else have a hand up?
Looking for other hands up? Um, Margaret, I'm going to ask you to unmute. Go ahead, Margaret.
Hi, everyone. My name is Margaret Cody. I was interested in where I could find more of a breakdown on the math that leads to this being $2 per taxpayer per year. I don't think I saw that on the Town Hall pound website. Is it there or where can I get that?
Um, Margaret, if you email me, I can send you the, the breakdown of the current bond interest rate at an estimated bond amount of 700,000. And the $2 per year is additional to what we had already estimated from the, from the vote, the original vote. But I'd be happy to send you that breakdown from the Vermont Bond Bank.
Great. Just, just so I know. So it's $2 additional to what? What would be the total then per taxpayer per year?
Okay. Bob, do you want to speak to the tax, to the tax rate?
Oh, oh, sure. So the original estimate on this was that it, we had voted originally to, to, to add this cost to every parcel. And it was calculated out at every taxable parcel in, in Pownell, it would add about $25 per year. That was for the original $600,000. So when we take a look at the repayment schedule, every year between now for the 20 years, it averages out to approximately $5,000 more than what we had originally asked the taxpayers for. And that 5,000, then it just becomes the $5,000 per year increase over the 20 years, divided by the number of taxpayers in Pownell. And that came out to a little less than $2 per taxpayer. Now, some will pay more, some will pay less, just like it's always true. But to put it in perspective, we just presented today what it, what it'll cost the average taxpayer.
That's great. Thank you. And I'll email you for follow-up. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Margaret.
Um, anybody else?
Yeah.
Uh, Caroline?
Yeah.
Okay. Here's Caroline.
Caroline Martel here. Just have two questions. When is the project going to begin if all the permits are in place? And two, are you going to have a general contractor oversee this so we don't have all these delays and issues and problems over permits?
Um, sure. So Messina Builders is the contractor. And I'm actually the one who's been working on getting all the permits over the last two months. And we have all of them now. So there's no more further permitting to do. And it's Messina and I've been meeting with Messina Builders and they're, they're ready to go. We've been talking about the next steps of the project. And because this has to go back to the voters, we're looking at a March ballot and we're hoping for an April groundbreaking.
Okay. So I would also add that there's much more confidence in that statement than there was, than there was when we originally got the approval. We now have all permits in place and, and as we pointed out, this is a shovel-ready project.
That's good, but it's just too bad that people didn't know what they were doing before. Like I have to agree with Jen when she said it's been a year and it's just frustrating and that's why it's costing us more money.
Very frustrating. Um, that is, that is a true statement and they're, you know, we're frustrated on this side too. But, but I, I hope everybody's been paying attention to our board meetings over the last several months and going back to the summer. And we really, I got to give Rebecca a lot of credit. She really broke a lot of log jams in getting all of these permitting and things moving forward and moving forward pretty quickly. Since we got her involved. So I, you know, we, we've, we've made a lot of corrections.
Thank you, Bob.
Can I speak to this?
Caroline, one more question?
Can I speak to that for a minute to answer some of Caroline's questions Angie?
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
Um, so Caroline, just to be a little more clear, I guess, on this project moving forward. At this time, and this is not just for you, but to answer your question. At this time, the project is being quote managed unquote by Rebecca, myself, and Tom Shewy.
And Messina.
Tom has some, and Linda, excuse, I'm sorry.
Linda and Messina Builders.
And Messina Builders. That's right. But from a town standpoint, the four of us have been sort of spearheading this moving forward. I am going to be the person, if the project moves forward, I'm the one who is going to see all of the bills, accounts payable, kind of stuff coming through. Tom, Tom has some background and you know Caroline and I have background in building. Tom has background in building and stuff. So I, I'm pretty confident, I'm very confident actually, that moving forward in this stage, we're under good management now. I hope that clears up some of it and, you know, help me out Rebecca if I left anything out, but I think we're pretty good.
No, I mean, I think the hard, the, the really the, for me anyway, from, cause I, you know, I came in on this on the 11th hour and really what I've been working on, as you know, is, is the permitting and making sure all of the, all of our communications with the state are smooth. And, you know, I've, I've also managed to extract some, some rebates and, and all of that. And really, that was the big struggle and that was, you know, we got there though. It's, it took about two months, but all our permits are in place. The next piece is actual construction and, you know, that's when the builders take over. Messina Builders, they're extremely experienced. You know, I'm certainly there to assist them and help them with communications, anything that they need. If they've got something stuck, I'll go unstick it and continue doing what I've been doing. But I really, I feel very confident going forward, knowing that all of the pieces are in place now, you know, and I'm, I'm glad we've gotten it there.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, oh, there's someone else waiting to get in. Hold on. Do all the things at once. And anyone else with hands raised? I'm looking. I don't. But we can give it a minute if you like, but I don't see any other hands raised.
Oh, there you go.
So, oh, here we go. Here you go. Go ahead Jenny.
I, I don't want you to feel like I'm trying to sabotage any of you. I, um, three of the board were not on the board last year. Rebecca, you were not part of it last year. I, I just, we were told it was shovel-ready a year ago. Why do we believe it now? And why are we, why are we not going for the roost, which is $200,000, which is going to cost the town a whole lot less? We're in a pandemic. All of us have been suffering financially and personally. I don't understand why we're going to spend even more money now. That's how I feel about it. So.
Cause our permits are in place and we need to move forward with this.
Well, so Angie, do you feel we need to move forward, but the town gets to decide? So I'm, I'm organizing how I feel about it and the town will vote on how they feel about it.
Jenny, the town did vote on it.
No, we have to vote again with the costs going up. Do we not have to have another vote since the bond has changed?
We're only asking to approve $90,000.
Right. So, so that we have to have another vote. So the town needs to vote on it. That's my point.
For the 90,000, not for the
We have to revote the whole entire bond.
Correct.
This, this whole entire bond. So Jenny's absolutely right. The, it's, it's not a $90,000 vote. It is a $690,000 vote that has to be presented to the taxpayers in March. So let's make sure we're clear on that. That's for sure. It is a $90,000 increase in, you're absolutely right about that. But it's a $690,000 vote, not, not a $90,000 vote.
Right. I understand that.
The total. And a point of order as far as the as far as the roof goes, it would basically have to be tore down due to
Jamie, that's totally wrong. You're totally wrong on that. I don't know where you got that information, but that's totally wrong.
I've been to that Can we talk one at a time?
Yeah. Permit for municipal building to be put there, that structure was going to have to be gutted and basically raised. I mean, from the, you know, if you've actually been in that building, that, that foundation is weeping. So there's a lot of work that has to be done in there.
Okay, Jamie, so now the open air cannon runs. I'm going to go there. Well, part of the foundation is weeping.
It'd be the northeast area. I know that the floor is definitely wet under there.
The floor?
I've been in there too, Mike. I mean, I didn't really want to go there, but.
I'm going to get into the whole thing about what's going on there. But the misinformation about some of the places that has been, have been in the past, looked at is ridiculous and has been ridiculous. Okay? Now, I've been in that building. I've been in it twice in the last two weeks. And I'm, I'm not trying to tear this project down or whatever, but all I can tell you is there's a whole lot of misinformation going on. Okay. Which has been fact of the matter through this whole entire process. Because yes, the last board came to the taxpayers and said they were going to be shovel-ready in November of 2019.
Hang on. I gotta speak to the previous board. I, I have to. We said that we had a goal of groundbreaking. No one said shovel-ready. That's just not true. The previous board did not say shovel-ready. We, we knew we had to do permitting, but we, we thought the process would go smoothly. We were wrong about that, but we didn't say that it was shovel-ready. So I, I, go ahead, Mike. But let's not.
I just think, I just think from our standpoint as a select board, moving forward with whatever project we move forward with, I think at this point, we need to sit down if we're going to go with the new building. And I think we need to figure out where we can cut that building and do some budget cuts like we do with everything else. Because in my honest, 100% honest opinion, if we present to the taxpayers in March, again, an increase of $100,000 on this project, which is $90,000 on this project, and, and we're telling them again that we're, that we're ready for groundbreaking, we're going down and we're going down hard. I really believe that and you know what? Now is the time to get it out there. I think we need to sit down as a board and I think we need to, to say, okay, we need to cut some costs on this project. And wherever we can, and maybe we can't, but I think we need to sit down and say, we need to cut costs or try to at least cut some costs before we do anything in March.
The other thing I want to point out is the, it was brought up in public comment, why we went with this particular proposal. And it was the only proposal that met the town goal from a previous vote stating they wanted to save the schoolhouse and have it worked into the town hall project.
And I am 125% for saving that schoolhouse however it gets done. That is a huge, huge concern of mine and, and I will do everything that I can to preserve that schoolhouse, no matter how it was preserved.
I just wanted to let people know that was a voter's choice. And that's what, one of the reasons why we went with that particular, this whole project, what we've been trying to work on.
Well, and regardless, regardless of the past, going forward, getting into a new town hall as quickly as possible. We do have, we still have the same old issues and all the same issues that, that we've had for quite a while in the current town hall. So we, we do have all the reasons for moving forward. I fully believe that this is the right project. It is the cheapest path to go forward. And I think we may need to move forward with it. I think we get this before the voters. Hopefully they vote yes on the $690,000 bond, which, and, and, and we, and now that we've got all the permitting, we get to the construction phase and that's where the risk really drops. So I, I, I don't see that going back and evaluating other options at this point is going to be cost effective. I think that's going to add more costs and help us. I think we need to move forward. I think we need to move forward.
And that's what Rebecca's been doing, Rebecca's been working very hard on this project with everybody and she's trying to cut costs and get everything lined up. And like I said, she's gotten all the permits, we're moving forward, we are ground ready. We can't help it that it's been three years since they got the prices on everything. We have inflation, you have COVID-19. Anybody that works out there knows that if you get an estimate for something on your house and it's been two or three, four years later, you have to expect an increase and that's unfortunately what's happened here. So if there are anybody else out there that would like to ask a question, could you please raise your hand?
There's someone wanting to get in. Uh, would you like to hear from Jenny again, just not spoken twice? Would you like me to put it back on?
One more time.
Okay. All right Jenny, I'm unmuted you. Go ahead.
No, I actually didn't have my hand raised, that's.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, thank you.
All right, let me see, is there anyone else? I'm not seeing any other hands.
Somebody looks like they're trying to get in, I don't, I don't know that.
I just let him in, I just let him in.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I saw it. Um, I do wanna just quickly say that I am going to make sure that the presentation from tonight is put into a video format. I'm gonna even try and, I'm not terribly tech savvy, but I'm gonna see if I can get it on even a YouTube video so it can be more easily shared. I'm gonna make sure it's on the Facebook page, the town, uh, panel Facebook page, I'm gonna make sure it's on the website and all of that, so. Yep.
All right Ronnie.
I want this explained to the taxpayers. Not this, uh, $2 or whatever. I want it explained how we're gonna pay for it. Is it gonna be like when we buy anything else? You have a budget, here you are, you're priced for so much, that value is so much, that's how it is. If you've got a $500,000 place, you're gonna pay a lot more than a personal visit, a $5,000 trailer. I want that explained to people so that, I don't want this confusion of this $2. And it's like, like the sewer project, that was all along through to $35 or $78. That should have been done in a more proper way. All I'm trying to do is do fairness.
Sure.
You can't go after just the person on the bottom.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I got to say, but I want that explained before any vote comes up because you won't get, well, you, you won't get anybody like myself to vote for it, I don't know how long you're gonna pay.
Well, you guys are gonna have the, as a board, have the opportunity to set how this is taxed. That's not up to me, so you guys can discuss that, that's certainly something that you should discuss. And that was something that would definitely would need to be completely known and transparent before any vote on this bond happens. I agree, so, yeah.
And I, and I, I agree with Ronnie, I think the, the, the previous one was, was not the fair way to do it. We did it $25 per parcel and that meant that some people who, who might own 10 parcels, but they're not very high-value parcels would be paying $250, while somebody who owns one parcel in a very expensive house uh, would only be paying $25 a year. So I, I, I'm gonna be advocating for, you know, per $100,000 worth of value, you know, the, the value method of taxation. So when we said, so when we said it averaged out to $2 per taxpayer additional, uh, we mean it averaged out. Just like I said, uh, during, uh, uh, earlier, it's gonna be more for some people and it's gonna be less for others. But, but that's the average increase and, and the average won't be what, uh, what each taxpayer experiences.
Okay, um, yeah, a couple more, so first I'm gonna go to the phone who, she's already unmuted, so go ahead, there's somebody on the phone? Hello?
Hello?
Hi, um, my name is Donna Lozan, I just have a couple of questions, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, my first question is, um, in looking through some of the previous minutes, is it true that, um, Pauline was in fact donating her time when she was on the project?
Yes, she was.
Okay, and that was a significant cost savings, correct, or no?
Yes, very much so.
Okay. Um, and my second question is also, uh, in some of the previous minutes, it was stated that the Ponal Historical Society was donating money. What happens if the roost is chosen, what happens to that money?
There's, there will be, yeah, there will be no, yeah.
Okay, so that was, so there's already some, there was some cost savings there and some donations in fact, correct? Okay, just, just checking and wanted to make sure, I really appreciate your time and I appreciate all the work you guys have been doing on this, thank you.
Thank you Donna, have a good night.
All right, so I'm muting her and then Sarah, I'm gonna unmute you, go ahead.
So I had a couple of questions, um, first of all, Angie noted that.
Can you state your name, I'm sorry, Sarah?
Yeah, sorry, this is Sarah Harwood.
Sarah Harwood.
Yep. So Angie, you stated that, um, the, the, it's, it's typical that a assessment will change within a three to four year timeframe. You know, if you have a assessment done or an appraisal raised beforehand, but this has only been a year. So I, I, I guess I'm struggling to understand why there has been that significant of a change um, and how we're just appeasing it to the fact that it is simply through COVID and due to a long lapse of timeframe, when it was my impression when we voted that this was something that was going to be transpiring in the near future.
Hey Sarah, um, actually, uh, the estimates from the original RFP, I believe, are two years old, correct? Yeah, and there were, there was certainly some delay because of COVID and because of the delays because of the permitting.
Okay, um, that, I find that, that hard to understand when we voted on it less than a year ago. And then also, I, I am struggling to understand why the process has taken this long to occur to begin with. I understand that COVID did in fact, you know, set things back. But is there anywhere that, that dictates the fact that Bob was mentioning that this was in fact the cheapest option to move forward? Is there anywhere that I can find the information as far as, um, the itemized cost of the different options that are available to us now as taxpayers?
What do you mean by different options, you mean other projects or this project? Um, there are no other projects on the table, but Sarah, you certainly can reach out to me and I'll, I'll show you everything that I have.
Okay, but that's not public knowledge, that's just something that I have to specifically reach out to you for?
No, I, no, I, well, I just, you, what would you like to see? Would you like, do we have like the books with the original estimates, I have all the present estimates?
Like, is, is that like something that we can go and find on our own or is that something specifically?
No, you can ask for it and I'll send it to you. Ask for it and I'll send it to you.
Okay, I, I would be happy to do that, I was just hoping that that was something that was public information, that's all. Okay, but that's, that's great, I will certainly reach out to you for that information.
Sarah, it is public information, but you have to ask for it.
I hear you, um, I will definitely do so.
Thank you. Anything else?
No ma'am.
Thank you, you have a good evening.
You too, thank you so.
Um, I'm looking for other hands. Um, and I'm not seeing any. I'm not seeing any, so unless you guys would like to make some additional comments?
Does anybody have any additional comments, if not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I think that probably this is our best bet is to go forward with what we have. What is it, $700,000 total? Now, we've been fooling around, you know, for quite some time. And, and all, all that does is we spend a lot of money and we don't gain nothing. So I'm thinking it's about time we, and I'm speaking as a common sense guy, we gotta, we're gonna bite the bullet, we need to build it, we gotta have it. This building is, is not fit for people to be in here and it's not, doesn't have the space or anything else. And that is highly energy efficient and it's a brand new building, designed for that particular purpose. So, I mean, I, I think that that's our, our cheapest and most feasible option to go along with that. That's just my.
I agree with you, because we've spent so much money on this so far, that if we start over from the beginning, we've wasted all this money.
We don't do it already, we've got property, we've got, people seem to want it and act that it was bad, which is all right. There's been some things that happened throughout, it, it, uh, people got offended and this and that. You know, I think most people have grown up enough to say, let's get it on. And if people want their name on the building, I don't care, we could backfill by issue, I wouldn't care for all the things.
I also say that every time you bring up a new project, the idea of a new project, you're, you're immediately talking about spending thousands of dollars to assess the idea alone. You know, so, um, there is actually, um, if you're still listening Sarah, I do have the old assessment for the roost from years ago. Somebody gave that to me recently, I'm happy to share that as well. But, um, you know, you're spending thousands, every time you say, no, we don't like this, we go to the next one, you're, this is, you know, why, that's happened for every project that's come across the table, in fact, money's already been spent on the roost from what I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, they paid an architect firm to take and look at it to see what it would take to, um, bring it up to stuff, that was three boards ago.
And that was back in 2016, if I'm correct.
Yeah, it's about four years old, that, what I have is about four years old and I think that's the last time a prop, like a, a professional assessment was done on it.
Okay.
Well, I'm in agreeance with Ronnie and Angie is pretty, I'm thinking majority of the board, as far as this project has turned 180 degrees from last year. And, uh, and it's unfortunate that we do have to go back to the taxpayers, but it's the reality of the situation. And it's nobody's goal on the board to add a major burden to the taxpayers.
No, I think every one of us is very concerned about the taxpayers and we want the best we can do for the town.
Right, absolutely.
So, if nothing else, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I got one thing.
Sure. Go ahead.
Because, because my question or my statement actually hasn't been answered. Um, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go back, and this is for the board, if we're gonna go back and ask the taxpayers to increase, to vote on a bond that increases $90,000, are we going to sit down as a board and try to cut some costs out of that $690,000 that we're gonna ask them before we go to the boredom or to go to the taxpayers in March? Are we going to, I know, and, and I understand that there's certain things that we have to have because of the permitting process. I did this for a living, I understand that, so I don't need to have that lecture. What I wanna know is, are we going to sit down and try to figure out where, if we can, and I'm not saying that we can, because I don't know without sitting down and looking at it. But are we going to sit down and try to figure out if there are places where we can cut the costs to make this more palatable thing for the taxpayers of the town hall?
We certainly can try, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, as long as we're not changing the building design, if we can come up with ideas, I mean, I'm for it.
Right, that's why we volunteers and.
But if we've changed the building design at all, Mike, you know, we have to redo the permitting process and.
You're kidding, didn't I just say that? I didn't wanna do that.
I'm just saying.
Something in the interior that you can probably look at, I don't know, I don't know, without, without sitting down and looking at it.
So I gave, so I gave all of you, all board members about a month ago, two packets that have all of the estimates in them, the ones that were updated, the ones that still needed to be updated. Um, and, uh, one is a packet of above 10,000 estimates and a packet of under 10,000. So you already, we can, we can sit down, I'm happy to go over them with fine tooth comb and check prices, all of it. I'm happy to sit down and look and see, you know, are there cheaper lighting fixtures, can we save on windows, can we save on flooring? I'm happy to do this. So that's not an unreasonable ask.
No.
Right, as long as, but the only, as, you know, as long as it's not foundational, that's, that's, that's an easy ask, I'm happy to do it.
Well, as long as it doesn't interfere with any of the permits, that's what I said. I mean, because we can't, we can't interfere with anything that has or pertains to any of the permits that are in place.
Correct.
Also can't have it, have anything to do with the integrity of the building.
Correct.
You're gonna build a building, you gotta make it good.
Right.
You're gonna put windows in, I don't like good windows in there.
I was just gonna say the same thing.
Do it 10, 12 words.
It comes with window, it comes with windows, everything is pre-put into the wall.
All I'm saying is, you know, why, no, I don't wanna see any, any cost cut as far as, I think it's been pretty well gone through, over and over. And I mean, I don't, I don't know, I mean, we spend a couple of hundred thousand dollars for a truck. I mean, here we are, this is the town hall, it should be around, you know, it should be around 100 years. We gotta do stick care of it.
Right.
That's, you know, but, and the different people and, and I can't see, if you're gonna cut, if, if you wanna cut the carpeting or something, fine. Because you can always put carpeting in, you tear all the old one out, so.
That's what I'm, that's exactly what I'm saying Ronnie. Do we have, do we have a kitchen set up in there, and I don't know this, but do we have a monster kitchen set up in there that we can take that out of there and save 10,000 or 15,000 and 5,000 in the carpet? And before you know it, we saved $50,000 and we're not, we're not asking for 690,000, we're asking for 640. I just think that we as a board need to sit down and see what we can or can't do.
And I agree with you, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's a perfectly reasonable ask and that, that's what we ought to do just to be responsible. I mean, we should always look at the costs and see where we can cut them, provided of course, so that we don't have to go back and redo the permitting, just like you said, Mike. I, I, that's of course what we have to do. Um, I would be careful about what we ask the taxpayers for because we, we don't wanna be in a position to ask them for more money again later. So we need to ask them for enough now that we're confident as a board that we don't need to ask them for another increase and that, uh, and that it'll get the job done. And, and then if we save money after we get the approval, uh, then it's, then it's given right back to the taxpayers, right? If, if we come in under budget or, or something along those lines, that would be ideal. Uh, so, and so not even, so, uh, uh, what I'm suggesting is we ask the taxpayers for what we need to complete this project and then, and then we work and we don't stop the work of trying to keep the costs, uh, under control. One, control the costs as the project proceeds and two, see if we can continue to find cuts even after they approve it. I mean, it's just, you always look for the cost cuts, always look for the cost savings. But making sure that we're getting the quality that we, we also need in order to make sure that, you know, that, uh, 100 years from now, somebody's trying to preserve this building for historical reasons and not something that's just going to be raised in order to build something else.
Right. Okay, is that good for everybody?
Yep.
Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Jamie.
Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Angie, hi, thank you everybody, everybody please be safe and have a good night.
You too.